I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, and ever be united as one.
Mr. Dankert, could you please take the roll?
Mayor.
King.
President.
Councilmember Large Austin.
President.
Councilmember Fisher.
President.
Baskin.
President.
Obala.
President.
Waller.
President.
Posma.
President.
Pashusta.
President.
We have a call, your honor. All right, and because Mr. Councilmember Baskin is on the Zoom, we're gonna do a roll call at each agenda item, so the first one on the agenda is number one, adoption of the agenda, need a motion, please. So moved.
With additions.
Oh, plus the additions, yes, with the additions, Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor. Item number two is a motion approving the minutes from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, and November twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, motion, please. So moved.
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor. Thank you, Tom, item number three, under recognitions and awards, we have none, item number four is a motion for the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor. Very good, just a note on those recommendations, reappointments in the boards and commissions, it's very nice to see a bunch of names of the citizens of Austin willing to step up and either be recertified, reappointed, or come on new, so thank you for all the folks that help on our boards and commissions. Item number five is a public hearing reviewing the renewal of a currency exchange license for Tenda Takara Guerrero, Ann?
This currency exchange license was originally issued in two thousand and three to Tenda, and we have renewed it, excuse me, two thousand and thirteen, we have renewed it every year, and we've had no issues, we're required to have this public hearing by the state, so I would just request that you approve this license.
Thank you, Ann, any questions, council? If not, looking for resolution for item number five A, approving the twenty twenty-two currency exchange license. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Thanks, Tom, item number six is a resolution establishing license and miscellaneous optional fees for twenty twenty-two, need a resolution? So moved the resolution.
I second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Thank you, Tom, item number seven is accepting the twenty twenty-two Hormel Foundation grants, Tom?
Yes, the foundation has allocated just over one point six million dollars worth of grants to the city of Austin, I should say a million seven twenty-six if we include the quality of life pass-through individual items, for which we're very thankful for the foundation, their support for the city of Austin specifically, and for all the other entities that they support within the city, but with that, we need council resolution to accept the donations for the city of Austin.
So moved.
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Thank you, Tom, we never seem to do enough for the Hormel Foundation, and we do thank them through our words, and also a piece of paper going around with our signatures on it in writing, but that we are incredibly blessed to have the foundation give what they give to Austin each year, absolutely amazing, unprecedented thing in our community, so thank you, the Hormel Foundation. Item number eight is a resolution accepting donations to the city of Austin, and it looks like the donation today is large quantities of batteries, Energizer batteries gave to the fire department, and two thousand dollars donor from the Eagles for the flags of the city, so with those, looking for an acceptance of those donations for resolution number eight, so moved.
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Item number nine is a resolution accepting additional American Rescue Plan Act funds, Thomas?
City of Austin had received about one million three hundred and thirty-five thousand of rescue plans earlier in twenty twenty-one, with another tranche equal of that amount coming in twenty twenty-two, for which we passed a resolution accepting such, however, the state of Minnesota had about twelve point seven million dollars of ARPA funds that were not claimed by eligible entities, township, cities, whatever it might be, so under the rules of the government, federal government regarding this, it is reallocated out to each entity based on their proportionate share that did accept it, so the city of Austin received an extra forty-three thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety cents of ARPA funds, for which we were advised we should pass another resolution accepting these additional dollars, and again, those are being used based on our loss of revenue calculation, which will then offset police and fire wages and benefits, but at this point in time, we'd request a resolution, approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Tom, any questions for Mr. Dankert? If not, looking for resolution, item number nine. So moved.
I second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Thank you, item number ten is a resolution approving an agreement with Discover Austin, Craig?
Thank you, mayor members, this is an agreement following up on our action from October fourth, where we dedicated some fund balance, this agreement is with Discover Austin to provide more staffing resources to help promote our recreational facilities and the fairgrounds here in town, the agreement starts as of January first, twenty twenty-two, and would require a minimum of twenty-five hours per week on a rolling average basis throughout the year, they would also report to the city on the use of these funds, this is a pilot program over a three-year basis, but would be renewed annually, council action is requested to approve the agreement included as exhibit one, and authorize the mayor and recorder to attest the agreement.
Thank you, Craig, council, any questions?
Isn't this part of what they do already, aren't they supposed to market, somebody's coming to town and wants to use these facilities, don't they, or don't they use these facilities to market what's going on?
Mayor members, Councilman Austin, I think what we're really looking at is the general recognition that the recreational facilities have been an underutilized resource, as well as the fairgrounds, certainly that's within their purview to market and promote currently, but they've really kind of stagnated, it also recognizes some of the federal funding, our hotel operators have suffered, so we're trying to sort of teach them how to fish and bring about some increased utilization of those resources that would have reciprocal benefits both to the hotels, gas stations, restaurants, and those types of businesses by their increased utilization, we're also trying to increase their wherewithal so that they don't become as much of a financial drain on the community, our arenas, I think, are subsidized probably in the tune of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand a year, so to increase utilization of those facilities, we can't hope to erase those amounts, but we maybe can do some better on that if we're marketing and promoting them a little bit better, but that's kind of the overall objective of why we're doing that, and also recognizing that Discover Austin does quite a good job for us, I think their budget is around about a hundred and fifty thousand a year, and everybody's appreciative of the job they do, but kind of asking them to do more things without more resources is probably gonna give us the same result we've had in the past of underutilized resources.
Thank you, Craig, Councilmember Posma, you serve on that board for Discover Austin, any comments on this matter?
Actually, yeah, we're kind of, you know, we're really looking at this as a, the goal of this position will be to bring in new business, things that are not out there, that might be going other places, or actually to kind of give them an extra tool in their toolbox, so to speak, just past a new program where we are incentivizing folks, conferences or things that come to town and book a minimum hotel block, they can actually, the organization that's sponsoring it can get a bit of a discount or rebate from Discover Austin if they book based on how many days, how many hotel rooms, that sort of thing, and it's already working, we just passed it last month, and we just got our first event, it's an event that's been going on in southeast Minnesota for seventeen years, it's the first time it's coming to Austin, so we're excited to see things like that, and again, it has to be a first-time event that comes here, so we're really hopeful to try and bring in new business and new ideas for our hotels and for all of our facilities.
Excellent.
Mayor, I think this will be a great, I think it's what we learn when we go to coalition, Greater Minnesota Coalition, the thing that like, I think this is thing that Discovering Austin is doing already, which is will be, when I looked from ideas, when we went from the meeting last time, I think having something like this will be a great additional to the city, and I think, even though we still need more, I think we have a great team already, and I think what we learned from other city, if we will implement it here, especially, you know, having those businesses come, I think will be a great additional, so this will be a good thing for the city, I believe.
Thank you, if there's nothing further, looking forward to a resolution for item number ten. So moved the resolution?
I second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Thank you, Tom, item number ten is a resolution designated the twenty twenty-two municipal state aid streets, Mitch?
So, mayor, council, a few council meetings ago, we talked about our state aid street system, and some of the discrepancies that we had found in the last year or two, in regards to the total mileage per each road type in the system, so we've kind of sorted all that out, and got approval with MINDOT, and made sure everything's correct, and the final outcome is, what we need to do is pass a resolution to revoke, and then, and then again designate some additional streets to match the numbers that we are calculating, so what we have tonight is a resolution that would designate and revoke several streets in town to our state aid system.
Okay.
And then the streets that we would be revoking are listed on the resolution, there's quite a few of them here, I can go through the list if you want, or they're right there on the resolution.
I think we're good, Mitch, thank you, presentation prior, the highlighted backup is perfect, council, any questions for Mitch? If not, looking for a resolution, item number eleven. So moved.
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Thank you, the very lucrative bench rental agreement.
[laughing]
This is what the city relies on every year to function, item number twelve is a resolution approving a bench rental agreement with United States Bench Corp, Stephen?
Yep, pretty straightforward, every couple of years, we review this, and this is to allow US Bench Corp to place those brown advertising benches in the public right-of-way, and we would request approval of the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Lang, entertain a resolution for item number twelve? So moved.
So moved.
Okay, well, let's give Jason that, because he's Zoom, Paul, you're gonna second that, maybe?
Second.
Thank you, Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Thank you, Tom, item number thirteen is a resolution requesting feasibility reports for the twenty twenty-two street reconstruction projects, Mitch?
Yep, so every year, around this time, we request feasibility reports for our street reconstruction projects, it's part of the requirements that we do this as part of the assessment process, so this year, we've got, looks like eight projects, three of which are, actually four of which are milling overlay or reclamation, so kind of just the surface restoration, and then four of the projects are for reconstruction, and again, those are listed on the handout that I've included, if you have any questions on those particular streets, let me know.
Okay, council, any questions?
Uh-uh.
Look at resolution, item number thirteen. So moved.
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Thank you, item number fourteen is a resolution approving a community flood risk grant extension, Stephen?
Typically, well, in this case, we have a grant that is set to expire here at the end of the year, we have some dollars remaining in the grant that we plan to use toward design of the wastewater treatment plant levy, and therefore, we worked with our DNR contact to get a grant extension, and we would request council approval of this grant extension so that we can utilize the remainder of the funds.
Thank you, Stephen, any questions? All right, looking for resolution, item number fourteen? So moved the resolution.
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Thank you, item number fifteen is a resolution setting the twenty twenty-two seasonal temporary and part-time wage rates, Trish?
Good evening, mayor and council members, this is our annual resolution to adopt wage rates for seasonal temporary and part-time employees, those that might not be covered under a labor agreement that we hire on a seasonal or temporary basis, the resolution does include a increase to the minimum wage, and it has been reviewed and input by the department heads, and so again, just request that you approve the resolution.
Okay, council, any questions for Trish? If not, looking for resolution? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Thanks, Tom, item number sixteen is a resolution establishing deed restrictions for Todd Park, Kevin?
Good evening, mayor and council, as per my backup memo, as a part of the grant agreement terms for the DNR matching funds for improvements, including the port and place playground service near soccer fields at Todd Park, deed restrictions are required on the entirety of the park, those restrictions are as follows, the property shall be permanently managed and maintained for public outdoor recreation use, the grantee shall not at any time convert to any portion of the park area to uses other than public outdoor recreation, the documents which you are seeing tonight will formalize this process to meet the requirements of the grant.
Thank you, Kevin, any questions, council? Look at resolution, item number sixteen.
So moved. Second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Thank you, item number seventeen is a resolution reviewing a lot combination requested by Mark Lang, Stephen?
Yes, the petitioner has requested a consolidation of three lots located at the corner of Sixth Avenue and Eighth Street Northeast, based on the current use of the lots for the storage units that are shown there on their, on your aerial photo that is attached, it would make sense that these lots be consolidated into one, staff has reviewed it, and we would recommend the approval of the lot consolidation.
Thank you, Stephen, council, any questions? If not, looking for resolution to review or deny lot combination, I think it's reject or deny lot combination on seventeen? Or no? Approve or deny? There we go, we'll take a resolution. So moved to approve.
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Thank you, Tom, item number eighteen is a motion granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract and for the removal of junk and or illegally stored vehicles at one oh seven Second Street Southeast, the Torres property, so moved. Paul, you need a second?
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Member Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor. Okay, and the additions for number nineteen is a resolution awarding the contract for right-of-way acquisition services, is that Mitch? Stephen? Stephen?
That's actually Mitch.
Oh, or Mitch.
Um, so, um, this is regarding the Twenty-first Avenue Northeast reconstruction project, we discussed this on the November first council meeting with Craig Byram, also had some input here, there's four hundred thousand dollars that we're receiving in a federal grant on this project, and part of those federal grants, there's a ton of paperwork and documentation that needs to be done prior to a project starting, and one of those requirements is the certification of the right-of-way, basically saying that we own the land where we plan to put the road legally, and on the west end of this project, where Twenty-first Avenue connects to Eleventh Drive, or Eleventh Street Northeast, we're gonna be realigning the road, and from everything that we could see prior to starting the design of this project, the city owned the land, but during this certification process, it's not so clear, in a legal sense, I think we do own the land, but MINDOT's requirements for the paperwork are a little more stringent, so we need to go through the right-of-way acquisition process that's specified by MINDOT, there's all these, step one, two, three, that you have to follow, and in order to do that, we need to hire a right-of-way specialist and an appraiser to file these checklists, these specialists and appraisers need to be on a MINDOT-approved list in order to, you know, they have some certifications or some special training in regards to road right-of-ways, so we have lined up two companies to do this work for us, for a total of twelve thousand five hundred dollars, so our recommendation would be to go forward with the right-of-way acquisition process and award the services to these two companies, and this needs to be done in order to keep the project moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Mitch, any questions, council? If not, looking for-
And just to add, just to add, this is step one of a two-process where they will develop some costs for right-of-way that we will then have to purchase, we will then come back to you after they are done with a purchase agreement for some additional property for this right-of-way.
All right, thank you, looking for resolution for item number nineteen? So moved.
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor. Thank you, are there any citizens here that wish to address council, sir, anything from you? No? All right, I think that's about it, item, council member, comments? Hold the button in, on the bottom, yep, go turn the green, yep, there you go.
I have nothing, your honor.
[laughing] Thanks for that, Chris, we were hanging on pins and needles, all right, Craig, any reports and recommendations?
Yes, we did hear back from Senator Klobuchar's office, our request for some congression-directed funding for our wastewater treatment plant unfortunately wasn't approved, otherwise, that's all I have, and Mr. Dankert has something as a reminder to members.
Is it, wasn't approved, Craig, or that sometime they might come back with like two million rather than twenty-five?
Um, wasn't approved, but I think our, probably window of opportunity is probably closed.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Thank you. There you go, yep, thank you, sir. I think, Tom, let's remind us of the TNT.
I have pizza, that's my, no.
[laughing] Good announcement, thank you.
December eighth, Wednesday, just reminding council of our truth in taxation hearing, loads of fun, talk about lots of numbers, six o'clock here, and I've only gotten a couple of calls, and they've been based on valuations again, which is not part of our discussion, but we refer them to the assessor's office.
Right, right, thank you, Craig, anybody else need comment, department head? Nope. Okay, Paul?
Got nothing, your honor.
Obala?